I'm going to open the meeting. The meeting will occur over Zoom video phone teleconference per the allowance under the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 that waives the requirement of having a quorum of the Board physically present for a public meeting. We encourage those who would like to participate to call the number listed below or use the meeting ID and password to sign in. And Andy's now here.
Yeah.
So now I'll take a roll call. Fran Newton.
Present.
Alan Silley.
Present.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Present.
Andy Fitch.
Present.
Eli Badger is also present. Starting off, approval of minutes from 12:07 2020.
I have one correction. Page three, line 10. The Board agreed to close the use of town public buildings by public works and committees and add four meetings.
Anyone else?
Did you hear me?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Page three, line.
Yeah, Eli was frozen.
What's the line number?
Line 10. Line 10. On page three.
Okay.
At the end, clarify it by saying the buildings are closed for meetings.
Okay.
And with that, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for Monday, December 21st, 2020.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Fran Newton.
Aye.
Alan Silley.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger, aye. Moving on. CRF Public Works expenditure for a new one-ton truck.
All right. You guys, I'm not sure if you got the in the packet, you'll see the information in there, but this was approved back in for the town vote, but I just need a permission to put for the chassis and the body. So if you guys have any questions, I can answer them.
Craig, what's the delivery on this truck? What's the time of delivery?
Because it came so late, we're looking at January. I'm not sure exactly. He didn't give me a date, but he said mid-January for the truck right now as it sits.
And what size truck is this?
It's a 6500 Chevy 6500.
Okay, so it's going to be fairly comparable to what we've got now?
Yeah, except for it hauls more weight. It's 19.5 versus 15.5, but 550.
Okay, and what's going to happen to the current truck that that we're using? Is that going bye-bye?
We're going to keep it for right now and for a reserve piece as long as we can, as long as it's feasible because I have no backups if a plow goes down.
Okay.
So we're going to keep it. We're going to try to keep it and and use it when something breaks down. Hopefully it won't knock on wood, but it's inevitable every year I have something break.
Yeah, and we've had a good storm to start with. Okay, that takes care of my questions.
Yep, okay.
That's amusing.
Who's that?
Sounds like a fire alarm or a motor of some kind.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of 5,500 from the Public Works Capital Reserve. 55,000, yes, as part of the Capital Reserve Fund, as part of the funding to purchase the new truck.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Yes. Mr. Smith.
Is Kathleen, is that, is that the other Kathleen? Is that Kathleen have two profiles?
Looks like it's me, but I don't know why. Do you want me to leave the meeting and try to log back in?
I'm just wondering Eli, if that's the feedback that might be because I admitted Kathleen.
That may be it.
You know what I mean? It might, she might be on here twice.
I am on twice. I don't know.
Okay. I just removed her.
There you go. Is that better? I think that worked Kathleen.
Yeah.
You did.
I think it's always best to stay muted unless you have to talk.
Yeah, yeah.
As a general rule.
Yeah, and the other is the video too.
Okay.
I was unmuted and I got a message to unmute myself, so.
Yes.
But I'm muting myself again.
Okay. So we have a motion that has for $55,000. Are we going to do further discuss, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Fran Newton.
Aye.
Alan Silley.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Moving on. Virtual.
Eli, just before you move on, did you want to vote on the body too? Or do you want me to wait until that's actually done? That was part of the most, part of my presentation too, but we cannot, we can wait if you guys want to see how it's not built, but I didn't know if you wanted to just get it out of the way today or we could wait. It's up to you.
Wait, hold on a second. Craig, what do you, what more do you need out of that Capital Reserve?
Well, there's, you remember that's just to pay McMolkin. And then we have to buy the body from HP Fairfield.
So are you saying you need money encumbered from the highway block grant?
That's right. Like, yeah, I've talked to Catherine about that already. I think he's going to add.
That's back up in the warrant article 11.
Yeah, so it's, it's like a yeah, I think it's 11 Eli, yep.
It's $55,000 for the amount of, and $30,000.
Yeah, but some of it's coming from.
Fund balance.
Some's coming from that and some's coming from the from my block grant line too.
Well, okay.
I think Charlie wanted to use the block grant first to get that out of the way.
Okay. No. We'll to raise the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of purchasing a one-ton dump truck. Okay. We're going to have to go back and amend of the motions.
Uh, well, no.
Because we're actually voting on using $125,000.
No.
But I think the second one is to vote to encumber the money from it's, it's, it's a different source of money, so.
We've got two different sources of money.
You wouldn't, if, if purchase didn't happen so late in the year, you wouldn't have had to encumber. But COVID pushed the, pushed the purchase back. And if Craig's saying, and let's just encumber, Craig, I got 38,000 left in your block grant, but you only, you want to encumber 30?
Yeah.
What do you want to cover? I mean, you don't think you're going to use that? You don't have anything outstanding on that highway, street improvement line?
I don't think I do, but if you want to, I mean, can we do up to that in case?
That's what I'm saying. If you don't have anything else coming through on that line for the rest of the year, you probably should just encumber the full 38,000 and that will save that will save a little bit in your Capital Reserve Fund.
That's right. So that's what I'd like to do is just, we might as well deplete that line. And I don't, I don't think I have anything coming out of that. I saved it specifically for the truck, so.
I mean, I don't know what's happened since then. My reports as of 12/8/2020.
Yeah, no, I don't, I haven't put anything against that.
Okay, so we have $55,000 right this second coming out of the Capital Reserve Fund. Correct? That's what we voted on.
Yeah, yeah, so you probably should, we probably should amend that to, to say the highway block grant, but then you're going to need a little bit to come out of the Capital Reserve as well.
I think we should make a second motion to encumber up to $38,000 from the highway block grant for the purposes of buying the truck body.
I would leave the 55,000 because they're not going to hurt you if you take less. It's when you want to take more.
What I am looking at right now is what we warrant article 11 said to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of purchasing a one-ton dump truck.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's one item. Second item of this sum, $55,000 will cut, will be withdrawn from the bubble, Public Works Capital Reserve to be offset by the highway block grant in the amount of $30,000 and the remaining balance to come from the undesignated fund balance. And no amount to be raised from taxation.
Right.
Yep, so that's what we need to do ultimately, yeah.
So the, you leave the $55,000 there and essentially the $8,000 that is encumbered, that would be $8,000 less that would have to come from the unassigned fund balance.
So the motion should encompass what the warrant article said. This, this machine is going to cost us $125,000. Correct?
Need it all in one motion, two won't work as long as it.
I mean, you don't have to, you don't sorry, I was going to say you don't have to vote on the article. The town passed that.
Yes.
You wouldn't have to invoke, you wouldn't even have to vote on the $30,000 from the street improvement. It's just the fact that you have to do it because you're at the end of the year and you're probably not going to pay it until next year.
Yeah.
So that's why I made a motion to encumber those funds.
Well, only one set.
What?
You only made a motion to cover 55 grand.
I made a second motion to encumber 38,000, up to 38,000.
Up to 38.
Yes.
Do I hear a second on the second motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Fran Newton.
Aye.
Alan Silley.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Okay. Any old business? No, no, we're, now we're at virtual meeting.
When we don't want to.
Charlie?
Well, I think at our last meeting, we talked about whether or not we would have a deliberative session and since then we have got a new House Bill. Legislation was passed. It is called House Bill 1129 that is drive, called drive-through voting. Essentially, I'm asking whether, I sent this to the Board of Selectmen and for discussion at tonight's meeting, determine whether or not we really want to move forward with this. Because if we do, from an administrative perspective, there's a couple of things that, you know, we have to get lined up here in the office, so to speak. And we have to meet certain deadlines because, you know, we're getting pretty close to required public hearings, receiving our petition warrant articles. The Budget Committee has scheduled their public hearing for February 13th, which is about two weeks away. Now.
January 13th.
January 13th. Yep, yep, January 13th. Technically, the 19th is the last date. Let me pull it up here. I'm pretty sure, so January 19th is the last date for us to have our public hearing on the warrant. And of course, we previously scheduled February 6th for the deliberative session. Now, this decision is up to the Board of Selectmen as to whether or not we were going to have a virtual town meeting. If we do so choose, we must have two virtual live meetings that first of all, have to be basically within seven days apart. We have to notify every registered voter in town, the parameters of this virtual meeting, time, date, place, format, et cetera. Okay. Then within seven days, we would take all what we were given into consideration in the Board of Selectmen would make the final warrant available. SB2 would be, if we choose, it would be drive-through. We'll drive through meeting.
Drive-through just for voting.
Drive-through for voting.
Now, I was a little confused. Is that drive-through for the final vote? I mean, okay, could we do any kind of a hybrid, like have the SB2 virtual and have the final voting be in person like we've done in the past? No, you can't do it.
Not what I'm reading, not what I'm reading, no. But the key provision to it all, Fran, is the first article that has to be written on that ballot is whether or not the town accepts this format. If the town doesn't accept it, then all the articles don't pass and we have the budget from last year and you have to redo it.
Has anyone talked to the school to find out if they'd even let us use the gym for an in-person SB2?
Eli, did they say something at the budget meeting on Wednesday?
Who's they?
The superintendent. I'm trying to think off the top of my head.
I'm not, I'm not sure that they mentioned it would still be up to our school board whether we use, could use the gym. At an earlier school board meeting, I believe they said that no outside groups were to be able to use their building.
That needs to be clarified because if they won't let us use it for either the SB2 or the election, we have no choice.
Well, then this says that it comes up, the decision would be made by the moderator. Where that decision is going to be made after the warrant has been posted and thus the town meeting has been scheduled, the moderator should make a determination under 44 that emergency COVID has rendered use of the meeting location unsafe. And the select board would then exercise the option to conduct a virtual meeting.
We still need permission or potential permission from the school. I mean, that's going to determine where we go from here. If we had it in person, we could set the chairs 10 feet apart and insist everybody wear masks, which I don't like, but it alleviates a lot of hassle with drive-in voting. But if they're not going to let us use the gym, then we have no choice but to follow all of this.
Well, personally, I do not care to meet in person with a large group.
Even if we meet in person, there has to be an option for virtual.
There has to be, there has to be that option.
We need to get permission or get the school's input. I mean, we can discuss this now, but we, you know, if they're not going to let us use it again, it's, it's a moot point. But if they're going to let us use it, we can continue the discussion.
In one way, if it's business as usual, we put the 10, we put the six feet apart or whatever's decided. Masked. And we can run it that way. I I'm not particularly happy about doing that, but I'm not sure that we're comfortable enough with the technology to handle a completely remote meeting like that.
I agree with you and somebody had suggested that we contact the school's IT person to help us out. And again, no matter what we do, there needs to be a virtual option.
You can't, you can't. We, I sent you guys from council, which says, we're going to hold an in-person town meeting, but allow those who don't want to come because of a COVID, because of COVID to participate and vote via Zoom. There's no authority to allow this. If a town chooses to have an in-person town meeting, everyone who participates must do so in person. You can livestream, you can livestream the meeting.
We can livestream the meeting, yes.
But only registered voters are allowed to participate in town meeting and there's no way they, they can't participate through Zoom at home, sort of like this format.
Yeah.
Again.
I think that we have to plan for both ways.
I think we do too, but we can't plan for in-person unless we get permission from the school.
That's we, absolutely, but we at least have to plan how we're going to, we at least have to decide how we are going to do the virtual, whether it happens or not.
Well, there's two different scenarios for virtual. One is for people to just simply livestream and watch if we have it in person. The other, that was me. The other thing was me. The other option is to go completely with HB 1129 and, and do this drive-by voting, which of course is a logistical nightmare.
Well, I would rather be prepared to have to do that one or the other. And I still think we have to prepare that method just in case we can't do it live, I'm in person.
I agree with you. So it's up to a lot of people to make all of this happen, like the registrar of voters to get out all the notices and decide on dates. Have you gotten feedback from Patsy or Bobby?
Well, a little bit. I talked about it with a little bit with Patsy. If we, we went this format, we thought about mailing out cards, little cards with the information on it. Let me, I can look at the boy, it'd be close. It would be real close. If we met, we meet again on the fourth. Well, so what I'm hearing from the board right now is we need to find out from the school if they would allow the deliberative and vote in at the gym.
I think.
Correct, correct.
Absolutely, but we have to start at least getting the planning part of virtual meeting in place.
Well, the thing is notifying all the registered voters, that would be the question on how quick we could turn that around. You have at least, let me come home and pull this up. The 13th for the public hearing. You could do it the 12th, the 12th. I think the 12th is a good day. I think the Budget Committee might have set the 13th, assuming they would receive all the votes of the Board of Selectmen on the petition warrant articles, because the 12th is the day that all of the, is the last day to get the petition warrant articles. Then of course, the last day to hold the public hearing is the 19th, a week later. So if we had to do this, those would probably be the two dates. We have a meeting on the 18th. We could always just move it to that Tuesday.
We can always have another meeting if we need to before then.
Right. Yeah.
It does. We are, I do not believe that we have to be bound by the first and third. If we need to have another meeting, we need to have another meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. And we likely will because again, we need to get this information from the school and that's going to influence our planning.
It does.
So what I said for now is, let's just assume we have to do this virtually. Let's pick dates for when the cards get out, when the two meetings are.
I agree with Fran. I agree with Fran. I think we have to plan on this as a virtual meeting. The school won't be back in session until what, January 4th?
But we can find out from the school board because they're in charge.
But when do they meet next?
I don't know. We can certainly find out.
Anybody have anything else to say about this matter?
I, well, I'll try to get an answer from them. They, yeah, they are off school for the next two weeks. And maybe by the fourth, you know, we could make a decision. I'll, I'll have to talk to Patsy about the, whether or not that's enough time to produce these cards. I'm under the assumption that the, maybe the school says no, right? Let's assume that they say no.
That's why we're doing this.
Right.
That's why I suggested we pick some dates, assuming that that's the way we have.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz I don't know, you know, we're talking almost two thousand cards that have to be mailed out to every registered voter. It's not the addresses.
So was that done by the supervisors of the checklist?
Yes. Patsy told me.
I would imagine we have a database that we can print from.
Yes. Apparently, there's, like I said, she talked to the post office and instead of envelopes, they have just a little card.
Yes. Cards and stickers.
Yep.
So look at the calendar and back up from the second virtual meeting, seven days earlier, the, the first virtual meeting, how far in advance do you need the cards out? Those are the dates we need to start with.
Yeah. Like I said, I think it's the twelfth and the nineteenth, because the last date to hold the public hearing is the nineteenth.
Okay.
Now, I mean, we, I'll have to talk to council whether or not we have flexibility in that as we had our deliberative schedule initially scheduled for February sixth. Maybe we can move it to the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, or the twenty-sixth in the second. I don't know. I'll have to get more clarity.
Decide, can, can we decide to move our SB two meeting?
Can you still have the SB two meetings on Saturdays? Like the sixth being the second one and the thirtieth being the we just need plenty of time after our, after our public hear-
Yes.
What are we stuck on here?
I just, I'm just waiting.
Well, Charlie, the question I, the question I asked Charlie is, can we move the SB two meeting?
Well, it says you can, for an SB two town or district, the drive-up voter session would be on March ninth, April thirteenth, or May eleventh. However, in a town where town elections and school district elections are courted, it would be necessary for the town and school district to cooperate. And this may be have, may require the drive-up voter session to be out on a different day. So you would almost, you could, but generally, the vote is on the same day as election, which is the second Tuesday in March. If you moved it, you'd, you'd have two separate days of voting.
Unless the school cooperated.
Yeah. So I don't know if it's necessary to move the, you'd, you'd really be moving things around, so to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it goes on to say for SB two, voted by official ballot for the election of officers and voting for, they would proceed as RSA forty thirty, forty thirteen. So I, 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 I mean, we might have a little bit of time to decide this on the fourth, I think. I, I, I think maybe it's cut and close.
The, the first thing that we have to have is the school allowing us to use the gymnasium.
Hmm, yes.
Who's Derek Court? Is it Steve Heath now?
Eli. I just sent Charlie a message on his phone that the school board means the fifth of January. Charlie, did you look at your phone?
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't have your cellphone?
No, I don't.
I looked it up. It's, it's January fifth, the next school board meeting for Ashland.
Yeah, and I wanna say at their meeting, I think they scheduled their public hearing for their budget, but
Yes, yeah, it says January fifth, their next meeting is.
That's whether we can use the gymnasium.
So I got my marching orders, I, I got my marching orders, and I'll follow up with the school and see if we can use gymnasium. And I'll talk with legal to see if we have some flexibility in those dates, assuming that we can't use the gymnasium and/or if the board determines we wanna have a virtual meeting, to see if we have some flexibility in those dates from the nineteenth until the sixth. You know, I'm just going off of what we have for petition warrant articles are due, and the public hearings that are due the nineteenth. Maybe we have a little bit of flexibility between the nineteenth and February sixth, and that will give us some time to really plan all of this out.
That would be nice.
And then, of course, if, you know, I get a decision between, before the fourth, you know, I'll be in the office the next couple of days and the first of next week, and if we have to have a meeting between now and then, we just post and have another meeting.
I think we should keep that option open to have at least a touch base meeting next week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Does that work for everybody?
Okay. Yeah, we're does that work for everybody?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine.
Okay. I'm gonna put this item under old business. The budget committee has asked me to ask the BOS whether we will allow them to use the water and sewer meeting room to finish off the budget process.
Again, I ask why, why they can't meet virtually.
I have done my duty. I do, I will still state that I don't believe that we should be having meetings in public with the way the rise in the COVID rates are hitting our area.
And I thought that's exactly what we agreed on at our last meeting. We said we granted them some flexibility for the meeting that was scheduled the next day, but that was the end of it.
And, yes, just, I was asked to bring it up. I did. Did I see a wave from you, Charlie? Did I see your hand go?
No, it's like this. That, that's usually how I wave.
Okay. Anybody have anything to say besides Fran and I?
After watching their last meeting where they were not sitting six feet apart, and they were sharing paperwork, reaffirms my original that they should meet virtually, just like we do.
Okay. So there's really no change in our decision. Okay. Charlie, we have something under select board items. The petition warrant article for discontinuing Parkway Road.
Yeah, you asked me to put that on there, because we received, we received inquiry from a member of the public about Parkway Road, who gentleman's interested in buying the property located next to it and discontinuing that road. As it is with the warrant, the options are at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, who certainly can put the warrant article on the warrant, or if not, resident registered voters are have the option of doing a petition warrant article, which requires the signature of twenty-five voters.
Greg, can you pay in on this?
Uh, one real, one thing real quick is if we decided to, I think it was Mr. Glidden, John Glidden, who reached out to us.
John Glidden wants.
Yep. If we decided to, we would have noticed, notify all the abutters within seven days of the meeting.
And as I understand it, don't his plans require a ZBA input?
His plans would, the way I read the rules, his plans would require of ZBA, ZBA approval and planning board approval.
We need a lot more information before we move on this.
I
I, I, I would say we should, at least the discussion should be tabled until we receive more information. I have nothing but anecdotal information to work off of.
That's right.
Agree.
So this will go to our next.
Mr. Glidden will come forth. He probably should, I would say he started probably with the planning board with a, with a what's, what's the, what's the term? Remind me. As a non-binding conversation with the planning board and how to move forward with this.
Informational.
To jump right in, to make it a petition warrant article would be, yeah, it's, I would say it's hasty, it's putting the cart before the horse. And it might only be considered advisory at that point. There's, there's a whole procedure to go through.
I agree, Kathleen.
Yeah, discontinuing of a road is not, it's not.
I mean, we'd have to have information, we'd have to have, I, I would want
I'm a motion that we
Put from Craig Moore above this of, and other people.
Craig told me they don't, they haven't, they don't maintain the road. They haven't for a while. But in the meantime, I, I, I can follow up with Mr. Glidden and rec, you know, say we talked about it lightly, and he should probably talk to the planning board and zoning board for other guidance.
Yeah, the public needs to know why they'd be voting on this.
Yeah. And if it's just to put a five thousand square foot building there for Mr. Glidden's use, they should know.
Don't forget it's a tax law building, though.
That's right. It would be nice. However, we still need the input from the planning board and the zoning board. He's gonna do anything.
We have to follow procedure. That's the bottom line.
Okay.
Most, most, most planning and zoning decisions are quasi-judicial, so we have to tread very carefully before we start going down this path.
Okay. Any further on this item? At this time? Hearing none? We shall move on. Mr. Smith. Do you have something you wanna talk about? Mr. Smith is frozen. And he's back. Mr. Smith, do you have anything you wanted?
Sorry, my internet. Oh, sorry. Not gonna hang up there. My internet said it was unstable, and I was like, I hope it'd come back.
Well, we know that you're
I have a couple other things.
Okay.
A little bit, um. Did we wanna talk about the warrant real quick on January fourth, or do you wanna wait a little bit to see what's coming through? Wait for the public hearings? I mean, do you wanna talk beforehand about the capital reserve funds?
I do not want to do everything all at once and in a hurry. Can we spread it out? What information do you have now, Charlie?
It's certainly up to you guys. I mean, the warrant is pretty straightforward this year.
What information do you have now?
I have all the warrant articles except for the petitioned, which of course, as I've said earlier, we can't get until the January twelfth, the deadline.
Yes, but we have what we, we are proposing for warrant articles.
Yes.
You wanna send those to us?
Except for determination on how much the board wants to put on the capital reserve funds articles.
Okay.
If any at all.
Yeah, can you send them to us, Charlie?
Sure.
Should we, should we consider having a meeting of the last week of December?
I think we should.
Like the twenty-eighth or the thirtieth or thirty-first?
Yeah, I think you're right.
And we could get through the warrant articles?
Yeah.
Except for the petition ones?
Yeah, I think you're right, Eli. Three o'clock, next, next Monday.
Okay, three o'clock next Monday. How does that work for everybody?
Twenty-eighth.
I can meet sooner if you want.
Well, the twenty-eighth, we, the twenty-eighth is a budget committee hearing at four o'clock.
That's if they find a place, right? Because they were
As if they find, um as if they find a place. Part of what we said about meetings was not only that the town buildings were not to be used for, for, for meetings, but there were to be no public meeting, there would be no in-person meetings.
Are you asking me a question, Eli, or you're just making a general comment?
I'm just sort of making a general comment. I, I thought that at one point, that's what we said.
Because I, yeah, there's no way, is the best of my knowledge, that a Board of Selectmen could not withstand public officials that were elected from having a public meeting.
a Board of Selectmen could not withstand uh, public officials that were elected from having a public meeting. I don't know how that would, that that'd be possible.
Okay, the last public meeting that the Budget Committee had was in Meredith.
Hmm.
So.
That's because of the, right, because of the vote of the board.
People could go over um and show up in person.
Where in Meredith did they have it?
It was at the Hut- it was at Huddleston. It was at the SAU two office. Correct, Charlie?
Yep, yes. I, I, I don't know, guys. I don't know what to tell you.
I'm not saying that they can't have a meeting. No, see, you misunderstood, Charlie. It's not that they can't have a meeting. It's that they can't have a meeting in person.
In a town building.
In a town building. Uh. Okay.
So before we get off of this subject, we've made the decision that you can't have public boards and committees, they can't have meetings in the town public buildings.
That's right.
Where are we with SB two? That falls in that category. We've told them they can't have their meeting.
It it certainly does. Uh, but one of the things that we did say is that we would review this every so often. I mean, situations change.
See, I don't see that in the, in the minutes, that we would review it.
Well, I specifically said to a comment that Mr. Silly made when he wanted to put a time limit on it, that we review it week by week, day by day, month by month. Maybe it didn't get in the minutes, but we specifically said, because this is a very fluid situation. You know, at one point, we had no COVID cases in Ashland. At one point, we had ten active. Right now, at last I looked, we have six active. You know, it's, it's just kind of a very fluid situation.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pointing out the fact that we've told them they can't have their meetings, and here we are thinking about this SB two meeting.
Um, I mean.
We would have to make exceptions for public hearings too, but we'll just cross that bridge when we come to it. But for their regular meeting right now, it's just risky. Especially when they have a good option of doing it virtually like we do.
Any other comments?
I'm still here. It's just my video messed up, so I'm not, not trying to avoid anybody, but I'm having internet problems. And if I take the video off, I'm hoping it might fix it.
Okay.
So anyways, uh, next Monday, the twenty eighth, uh, anytime uh is good.
Well, I mean, at four o'clock, I, right now, a budget hearing, a budget committee meeting is scheduled for four.
Could we do two? I mean, because they're going to use the same number, right?
They can use a different one.
Yeah, they can use a different one. But two o'clock's fine by me. Uh, let's see, I think.
Two, three doesn't matter.
Yeah, two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two, two o'clock's fine with me.
That's three. We've got two more to ask. Andy?
Yeah, so I've got, I've got something hanging over my head. I don't know when it's going to come. I'll try to to move it if it falls in the timeframe. Um, I've got a closing on a house. Um, I will, I will try to shift it. I'm not sure I can if it comes during that time. I'll say it's okay, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Would the morning work better for you, Andy?
Charlie, I really don't know when this is going to hit. Uh, this is something that's been in progress since July. And we have to get it done in the month of December because the new deed's made out for the month of December, so I'm not, I just don't know when it's going to hit.
Okay, so let me know and I'll tentatively uh put two o'clock. Uh, we have a couple of days. Um, I mean, I'm here until Wednesday, so we have a couple of days to to move it if we need to.
Okay.
Okay, if, if no one has anyone thing.
How about you?
I'm good.
Okay.
Um, before we started, I asked the chairman if I could have maybe five minutes to give like a little bit of an apartment update for the public.
Okay.
First of all, I would like to thank staff uh for all their hard work that they did uh during the uh recent snowstorm we had. Uh, we got thirty inches uh and staff really pulled together. In particular, uh, the police department is helping push people out. DPW was out snow plowing. Um, and uh, the guys had a long, long weekend and uh they really worked together as a team. Um, you know, we get so much snow like that, it's a little difficult for all of them to keep up with it. Uh, but fortunately, we didn't lose any power. Uh, and um, DPW, I think, is just about done cleaning up. Uh, it's one thing pushing the snow off the side of the road, but you know, it takes a couple of days after for them to go back and move it all out of the way, so um. Like to put a pat on the back on for all the guys that worked hard during the storms. Uh, it's very much appreciated.
I was in Concord yesterday, and I tell you, our streets look better than theirs, so.
Our streets look better than Plymouth. So. That's good. You used two minutes, Charlie. You have three more.
The other part, I I I sent this update to the Board of Selectmen a week ago as to uh, what's going on with the department, so to speak. So I thought I'd also share this with the public uh, for just about each department. I'll, I'll try to make this real short and sweet. Uh, the Headworks Inseptage Receiving Station project is, it's basically finished. Uh, we had PRB, the contractor back to finish up. Uh, we still have some issues with the solar, but Rusty uh, is working on getting that fixed. Uh, we also fixed the new valve out in the, that's it. This valve is out in the middle of the lagoons. I don't know if everyone remembers a couple of months ago when the turtle got stuck in the chamber. That's it. That's the valve, uh, the, the infamous thirteen thousand dollar uh turtle. Uh, the other things, Underwood Engineers has uh already started work on the facility analysis sometime in April. We're expecting getting that report back. This is the State Revolving Fund uh lending that we are getting seventy five thousand from DES. And of course, we had to spend all seventy five thousand, so it's a hundred percent reimbursable. Uh, electric department, we had reminder, we had BEPSA in last week about the AMI, which is Advanced Meter and Infrastructure Project. Uh, I sent a BEPSA, a list of all of our meters in town to try to get a final number. Uh, hopefully, we will get that back by the first of the year, so the board can compare BEPSA versus Eaton and in whether or not we move forward with that. Uh, billing aspects, we're still a little bit behind in the billing for both utilities. Uh, staff here has been all on hands on deck to try to get them bills out. We've received a lot of calls from customers concerned about paying their bill and then then it's not showing on their bill. The reason button for that is if you get the bill and it's not posted by the time that the new bill is printed, it's going to show up. I've been advising folks, don't be concerned. Uh, we're not charging interest or late fees or anything like that. We're trying to catch up with it. Uh, I can understand the concerns that folks have. You know, if I pay my bill and still showing a negative, you know, what's going on? But please don't be concerned. We're taking care of it. Uh, hopefully, when we get the new handheld meters and we get the new website up and running, I'm working on getting a new merchant to accept credit card payments. The website would accept credit card payments. All of this will hopefully with the AMI automated all of it for, for our customers. Um, utility asset management, this was the company that uh came in, inspected a couple of our utility poles. I think about, I would say about five hundred and sixty inspected. Uh, and we only had about thirteen that are red listed. Uh, and over the next couple of weeks, uh, the guys from AD are going to try to replace those uh with new poles. Uh, police department, our new officer started on Monday. This officer and our other officer, Bethany, will be going to uh the academy starting next year. The after-school program at Parks and Rec, remember, we had a little bit of a scare with the contact, uh, post-contact. Uh, that came back negative and the program was back up and running last week. Uh, as a reminder, the Town Clerk Tax Collector is closed on Wednesdays and Fridays. That's only to the end of the month. Uh, our new finance assistant started off last week. We were Diane, we've already started training her on all the financial aspect of things. Our new building inspector started also last week. Uh, he works on Tuesdays and Thursdays from eight to twelve. Uh, those are the office hours. I hired a new welfare director who actually starts tomorrow. Uh, so we are almost full staffed, except my admin assistant unfortunately resigned the last Friday, so we're almost there. Uh, Public Works, of course, uh, you know, we got the new one duck, one ton dump truck coming. Uh, fortunately, we got the plowing around the utility building taken care of. Uh, still waiting to hear back from DOT about approval of funding. That was supposed to be the fifteenth. Uh, I haven't heard anything back from DOT. I do know that GMI did extend their offer until January first. Um. You know, they they bid on that in July, and if they don't have to start until April, you know, costs are going to go up for them, so, uh, but we did get them to hold off on that. Uh, as a reminder, we did install a new Dropbox outside the town office. I'm encouraging everyone to use it uh, instead of coming to the front counter. Any, any time of the day, it's real simple. You just drop it off and they'll, they'll process it from there. Uh. That's it. I think that's it. The town reports, town reports, I need the town reports from the selectmen by the end of the year, as we're almost there, done preparing that.
Okay.
Many questions? Did I miss anything?
No, I guess no questions.
I guess not.
You have one more thing that you wanted? Was it non-public, Charlie?
Yep, non-public.
Do you want to tell us?
Personnel under A.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public according to whatever the RSA is.
Ninety-one A three colon two A.
Okay, that's my motion.
Go ahead, here a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Fran Newton?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.